Welcome back for Freeport Town Council Meeting Number 20-22. Town Council Chambers here in Freeport, which is November 15th. I'll start with a roll call for our new council. We have Counselor Fornier, Counselor Daniele, Counselor Bradley, Counselor Egan, Counselor Pilch is here, Counselor Bradley is joining us remotely due to illness. Sorry, Counselor Pillsbury. And Counselor Lawrence is absent. I haven't heard from Counselor Lawrence, so maybe he'll show up. So having dispensed with that, let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our second order of business is that the town clerk report on the returns of the November 8, 2022 election. I assume that you're standing in for the town clerk?
Yes.
Deputy clerk.
Okay, so Town Counselor-at-Large John Egan, Town Counselor District One Dan Pilch, RSU Board of Directors, there were two three-year terms, Maura Pillsbury and Kelly Sink. RSU Board of Directors, there was a two-year term that Cara Cacini won. Sewer District Trustees, there were two running in two positions, Thomas Hudak and Catherine Wallingford. And then the Water District Trustee, there was a write-in winner Clyde Young, and we believe he is going to accept. So opening day, opening of election, we had 7,693 registered voters. The number of registration cards handled by the registrar on Election Day was 198. Total number of ballots cast, 5,288. The percentage of voters who cast ballots, 68%. Number of absentee ballots requested, 2,370. And of those, 2,288 were returned and accepted. The percent of votes cast by absentee is 43%. And as of this morning, our total registered voters is 7,825. And we're happy to report Election Day went very smoothly. We never could have expected the number of registrations handled to be at the presidential levels. In 2020, there was 148 registrations. We had very few issues at the polls. Our office would like to inform the general public that candidates are allowed to be present at the polls on Election Day and may state their name and/or thank you for voting. Candidates are always made aware of the rules and regulations surrounding their attendance on Election Day. While it may seem like electioneering, we always ensure that candidates do not step outside the limitations of the law. With the volume of absentee ballots, we did utilize our option to process these ballots early. We convened on three separate days the week prior to Election Day to process 2,075 ballots into the tabulators. The early process memory sticks were then sealed until Election Night. On Election Night, after the Election Day total tapes were run, we then loaded the early processing sticks and ran those total tapes. The warden then added Election Day totals to early processing totals, and we arrived at our total report, the total reported on the return of votes cast that submitted to the Secretary of State's office. Our election staff made up of volunteers is pivotal to the entire election process. These dedicated volunteers work diligently to provide an election with the utmost integrity. All the training we provide cannot cover all the situations that may occur on the floor Election Day. We staff our team with an election warden who oversees all aspects of the election. We were so pleased to have Counselor Lawrence working with us and learning the A to Z of elections. While there are always fires that need to be managed during the day, at least we were not the clerk in Thomaston who had an election clerk show up at close of polls to help with counting with two sleeping roosters on her hood, who proceeded to investigate the polling area till an ACO arrived to capture them. And I just want to say on behalf of myself, Chip, I really appreciate you coming and doing whatever we asked of you.
It was a very interesting process. I'm glad I got a chance to do it, and I guess I'll be doing it next year, too. You signed up for two years, right?
Mm-hmm.
Till 2024. Maybe that's three years. Anyway.
Two.
No. Sorry. Do you want to be on the ballot next year?
Any of you are welcome. That's all I have.
Counselor Egan.
I just want to say I came back to the polls late and hung out and watched the count and also watched the incredible choreographed ballet movement of taking down the poll area. And obviously, that's been going on for years and years and years, but it went really smooth. And I was thoroughly impressed with the diligence and the efficiency of the whole team there. And it was great to see that the whole day went off pretty much like a Swiss watch. I thought it was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our deputy clerk?
Nice job. Nice job to you. Nice job to Chris, who's, Chris is watching online, taking minutes. So nice job to both of you guys, the staff for running that, but also for all of our various people, who we've got probably 50, 40, 50 people involved for the week prior and the week, the following, the days following elections. So nice job, everybody. And really nice to see, I was really encouraged to see the statewide, very few issues, disruptions of any sort. Everybody seemed to be very happy and, and elections went well this year. So thrilled.
And Shinna Bellows has been on Facebook Live all day about the District Two, Congressional District Two RCV race. So she's been very informative on that process, and it's all going on in back of her.
So that, that actual, the ranked choice is happening now, right? Yeah, today?
Yeah. When I shut off about 10 minutes ago, they had just been waiting for one last town, and that town had arrived, and so they were scanning them.
Well, check the news tonight to see what happened.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, Carrie and Chris and everybody else involved. With that, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Second. Thank you, Counselor Bradley, for the second. Since Counselor Pillsbury is remote, we got to do a roll call vote, so we'll go down. This is just to accept the town clerk's report on the election. Counselor Fornier.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Oh, he said, Matt, can you try again? We.
I turned the volume way down.
Peter. I've turned it up here. This is it, so.
Standby, Matt. We're trying to solve an audio thing. We can't hear you.
That's on. That's on.
Can you sing a few bars, Matt, so we can hear you?
I can't.
Can, wait, Matt, can you say something? I thought I heard you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, how do you vote, Matt? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the chair votes yes. So that's seven to zero. So thank you for that. Ah, thank you again, Carrie. Well, so actually, the roll call we did earlier was for the old council, so now we have to do a roll call of the new council. So we'll call the roll again.
And actually, I need to swear you guys in before we.
Oh, before we do, okay. Okay. So I guess we'll go down and get sworn in? Do you want to do it right here?
Do you guys need pictures or are you all set with the ones from?
It's not as big of a deal the second or third time around, so.
Yeah. If you guys want to do it, so. All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Dan Pilch.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue as citizens there.
Continue as citizens there.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a three-quarter town councillor.
As a three-quarter town councillor.
To serve my home on November 4th, 2025.
Serve until November 4th, 2025.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of state law.
And the laws of state law.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the town, three-quarters.
Of the town, three-quarters.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So now I just need signatures.
There's a little bit of issue with the.
Yeah. That's how it'd be. You're welcome. All right, that's it.
Okay. You're official.
You're official? I don't go at home.
Thank you, Carrie.
Welcome. Bye.
All right, so now we can do the roll call of our new members. So I'll go on the list here on the page. So Daniel Pilch is here, Counselor John Egan.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Bradley.
Here.
Counselor Fornier.
Here.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Perfect. Now we have our new council. Thank you for that. We do have a couple of things. We'll get to the third order of business, which is the chair and vice chair. And then there's a couple of things that I thought, since we're here together, we might as well take advantage of the, our time, since we haven't met in a while and we won't be meeting for a while. So we have another motion here to add a meeting. We'll have a bingo vote that we have to take to authorize a bingo game, and then.
Important town council.
Important town council stuff. And then we could talk about housing and some other sort of normal stuff that we do during information exchange, since that's not part of the normal agenda tonight. So if you guys are okay with that, we'll do that. So with that, we have a first, or the third order of business, first for our new council, is to elect a chair and a vice chair. And it looks like we start with the chair. So I would ask for any nominees for chair. Counselor Egan.
Do you want a motion to open that? Do we need to?
I believe we have to open the nominations first.
Oh, sorry, yes. Why don't we go down the line? Counselor Fornier, do you want to open the, or make a move, make a motion to open the nominations for the position of council chair?
A motion that nominations for the position of council chair be opened.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. And we got to do a roll call. Counselor Fornier.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have two nominations for chair. Any discussion?
I don't know if I, well, I like, you know, the reason I brought Chip's name forward, I think he has a lot of years in the council that he served. I don't think you have done a bad job, Dan, but I'd like to see a good mixture of different ideas. I think it's healthy to have different ideas come forward, and that's why I was nominating Chip, due to his years of service, and to bring some of the ideas that he may have. So I think you both are certainly qualified and both would do a good job, but I think there ought to be a little reward for people to put a lot of time in over the years.
I'll just say a couple of words. The, I feel like I've got a number of things that I've started that are kind of still up in the air that I'd like to see through, including the downtown vision stuff. And I finally kind of memorized everybody's names, so I can get through the roll call votes quickly. But in all seriousness, I do feel like it took a little while to get used to the role, and I feel like there's some momentum now. I'd love to keep that going and keep the work that we've got going forward. If I do serve as chair, again, some of the things I'd like to work on, based on some feedback I got from you all, is to be more inclusive, so there's less often when it's a, you know, the chair, vice chair, and town manager do things and talk, but more of an open process where we're all involved in more of the decisions without taking up too much of your time, because I know that's sort of a precious resource for us all with these four or five-hour meetings. So the inclusivity is one thing that I wanted to focus on, the momentum is another. And then lastly, if, again, I do serve as chair, I'd like to do a better job this year of setting goals with you guys. I feel like we kind of skipped through that last year. I think it would be good to take some time in December, January, and at a workshop, talk through what, you know, what we would want to do as a council, because I think it's easy to get caught up in the, you know, here are the agenda items that we're running through. And it'd be good to kind of sit and take stock of, you know, what do we want to do, big-picture goals, sort of in the way that we're doing it downtown, but for the rest of the town as well. So that's what I would want to do if chair. That's why I'm happy to have my name in the ring.
Okay. My name's in the ring. I'd like to say, I think you've done an outstanding job. Some of the things that I have a hard time reconciling is I have tried to say neutral in a lot of things, and I haven't jumped into, like you have, the downtown revisioning and all that, just so that I could have a fresh look at what are we doing? Are we going down the right path? Is this, maybe we could steer it a little bit left or right, and maybe we're right on the thing. But as a council, I think that's what our job is, to be the neutral and deciding body versus having a lot of vested interest in something, which makes it very hard to say, oh, you know, maybe we're not on the right track. And that's, I've seen happen here a couple of times. And not that we've been on the right track, but it's a lot of people getting a lot of vested interest into something that the other councils or other committees should be coming up with and saying, okay, and we should be able to put in a little input, but to dive in and say, this is the way it should be, and this is what, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to say, yep, this is good. So I feel like it'd be a little bit more of a neutral or inclusive, all that. I don't have any agenda, just, but anyway, that's my two cents.
Anybody else have questions? Comments? I don't know how to do this in any other way than to kind of do it publicly, because I assume that we would all need to.
Just put somebody up, and then that vote will probably determine who wins, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think we can do a written ballot or anything like that, I think, which you got to do, yep, yep, yep.
Sorry?
Well, and we all agree there's no bad choice either, so it's, I think we're all a friendly, friendly group.
Yep, yep.
My heart will not be broken.
So I'll entertain a motion if anyone wants to call the question on the top of the second page and filling in the blank with a name there. And then we'll take that vote. Counselor Daniele.
Be it ordered that Dan Pilch be elected chairperson of the town council. Is there a second?
Thank you, Counselor Bradley, for the second. Any further discussion? So we'll go down and vote on this, and if we don't get a majority, we'll go back and try again. So Counselor Fornier.
Nay.
Counselor Lawrence.
Nay.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
And I will abstain. So that's six to two with one abstention, so I think that carries. Sorry, four to, four to two, six total votes.
Can we re-vote?
Chair can't count, maybe I shouldn't be. Thank you for your votes of confidence. I will try and continue to do a good job, and if you see otherwise, please let me know. Open to feedback. So Counselor Lawrence, would you mind opening the nominations for vice chair?
Okay. I guess the nomination for the position of vice chair be opened.
Second.
All right, Counselor Fornier.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we have nominations open for vice chair. I'm happy to offer one. I would be happy to nominate John Egan for vice chair again.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Any other nominations?
I'll try one more time.
Counselor Fornier.
I nominate Chip Lawrence.
Thank you. I'll second that. That's the two nominations. Any other nominations? All right, Counselor Lawrence, do you want to close the nominations?
Sure. I make a motion to close the nominations for vice chair.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Daniele. And voting on the closing of the nominations, Counselor Fornier.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So that is closed. Any other discussion, comments, questions for the two nominees? Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, I think that, as people have said, that anybody that's up here who's been putting their time in and paying attention, has been elected by a lot of people in town, is qualified and could serve well. So I don't think any vote here is a negative. I think the candidacies have been presented as an alternative, which I think is a real one. And, you know, I'm voting for John and I voted for Dan because I view us in the middle of a lot of important things that they have been shepherding for a long time. So I'm reluctant to start all over with a new style and with a new way of approaching things, just for that reason. Otherwise, I'd be delighted to see you go for it, because I think it would be fun and I think it would be good. But I'm not going to vote for you, and that's the only reason, because I think we owe it to ourselves as a council and to the town to continue on the path we started and are in the middle of. And I think John and Dan will be the two people who are responsible, so they're credited and good luck, but also, you know, know the most about the details. So I'm going to shut up, but that's why I'm going to vote that way.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Any other comments? Yeah, I agree with everything Ed said, and I'd be happy to serve with either of you guys. I am particularly interested in having John's feedback as we get into this housing crisis that's ahead of us, that we'll probably start talking about tonight and continue to, continue talking about, I imagine, over the next several meetings, given his background on that, in that area. And then I also value his experience as previous chair, which has been valuable to me as I stepped into the role last year and continues to be valuable, so. But again, I think either of you guys would do a fine job. So with that, there's no other questions. Happy to entertain a motion for vice chair to vote on.
I move that John Egan be elected as vice chair.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Is there a second?
Second? Is that what you're looking?
Yeah, I'm looking for a second. Did you offer one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Daniele. I didn't hear you. All right, so we have a motion for John Egan for vice chair. Counselor Fornier.
Yep. Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yep.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that is closed. Any other discussion, comments, questions for the two nominees? Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, I think that, as people have said, that anybody that's up here who's been putting their time in and paying attention, has been elected by a lot of people in town, is qualified and could serve well. So I don't think any vote here is a negative. I think the candidacies have been presented as an alternative, which I think is a real one. And, you know, I'm voting for John and I voted for Dan because I view us in the middle of a lot of important things that they have been shepherding for a long time. So I'm reluctant to start all over with a new style and with a new way of approaching things, just for that reason. Otherwise, I'd be delighted to see you go for it, because I think it would be fun and I think it would be good. But I'm not going to vote for you, and that's the only reason, because I think we owe it to ourselves as a council and to the town to continue on the path we started and are in the middle of. And I think John and Dan will be the two people who are responsible, so they're credited and good luck, but also, you know, know the most about the details. So I'm going to shut up, but that's why I'm going to vote that way.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Any other comments? Yeah, I agree with everything Ed said, and I'd be happy to serve with either of you guys. I am particularly interested in having John's feedback as we get into this housing crisis that's ahead of us, that we'll probably start talking about tonight and continue to, continue talking about, I imagine, over the next several meetings, given his background on that, in that area. And then I also value his experience as previous chair, which has been valuable to me as I stepped into the role last year and continues to be valuable, so. But again, I think either of you guys would do a fine job. So with that, there's no other questions. Happy to entertain a motion for vice chair to vote on.
I move that John Egan be elected as vice chair.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Is there a second?
Second? Is that what you're looking?
Yeah, I'm looking for a second. Did you offer one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Daniele. I didn't hear you. All right, so we have a motion for John Egan for vice chair. Counselor Fornier.
Yep. Yes.
Counselor Lawrence.
Yep.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yeah, I'll vote for myself.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, so that's seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate the confidence.
There is confidence, I'm sure, in the whole, the whole group. If, can I make just one request as we go forward? You know, I voted for you guys and I believe in you guys because you're in the middle of it and you're running it, you know? But I think there's a risk to that as well, in that, you know, you get so used to running it that you don't know what questions there are up here. And that may be what Chip was getting at. And I had a long talk with Dan, and I think that there is a, it would improve things if, once a counselor expressed an interest or got involved, he was kept involved, that it, the river, which is my metaphor, just doesn't flow without them. Maybe you can't keep everybody in the river, but you ought to keep the counselors in the river if they've come forward and put, put themselves on the stake for some issue. And that's, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal. It's, it makes, I think it makes the whole council work closer together.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that's wise, and I got similar feedback from other counselors, too, and I'll try to do a better job of keeping folks in the loop, like I said earlier. I think it's, yeah, I think it's important. It's not my intention ever to not have folks in the loop. I'm sensitive to the fact that we can't have three or more counselors, but that's certainly no excuse for having a conversation with the counselor and giving an update or just having a chat. It's not my intention ever to not have folks in the loop. I'm sensitive to the fact that we can't have three or more counselors, but that's certainly no excuse for having a conversation with the counselor and giving an update or just having a chat. And by the same token, I would invite comments, feedback from anybody, anytime.
Can I go one step, one thing? So it's not so much, you know, just being looped in, it's like being not treated, and I'm going to, this is going to sound terrible, but it's really what I mean, not being treated as though your opinion was special. And, you know, you guys are working with an enormous amount of people. The process of downtown revisioning has been amazing in terms of how many people have been willing to come forward and express an opinion. You can't keep all, you can't make all of those things special. But there's seven of us up here who are ultimately going to have to vote for what the priorities are and what the money is going to be spent for. If I'm going to do that, I want to be, I want to be special. I don't mean to be smarter than anybody else, but make sure that I don't get lost in the river. Is that a fair thing to say?
Yep.
And I don't, and that's not a nega, that's not a criticism, that's constructive, I hope. I mean, I think the process has been amazing to this point, but we've got some tough things ahead of us.
Yeah, I agree 100%, and I, I'm always very clear that my opinion is just one of seven, and I have no authority, no mandate for any of the downtown work, other than just to kind of help keep the ball moving. And all of the meetings that we have are open to the counselors as well as the public. And I know this isn't what you're looking to hear, Ed, but I do want to make the point that if anybody does want to get more involved, there is room to do something. We've set them up as public meetings so that if everybody wants to show up, we can do that.
This is the sort of reaction that scares me, you know, because everybody has got an idea, everybody can do whatever they want. That's not true. I got elected by district too. I know what those people think, by and large. I want a special chance to express that view in the process, now that it's coming to an end point. It's, I know I can go to any meeting I want to go to. Everybody in town can go to every, actually, I can go to fewer because I can't create a conflict with other counselors. But, but the point, I guess, is as counselors, we have a unique response, maybe it's unique is better than special, a unique responsibility to represent our districts and the town. And, you know, when you start thinking you're involved, and then you find out that, boy, everything went by so fast, that you really don't know what's going on. It's embarrassing sometimes, it's scary sometimes, because you think you're pointing out things that are important, whether they are or not, I don't know, but you think they are. So I'm really trying to say, at least as far as the seven of us are concerned, let's make it a bigger effort to be sure that the river ain't going by too fast for us, to have our inputs. And I'm not, again, I'm not criticizing the river to this point, I think we've gone on an amazing way in the time we've had. But I also know that as you narrow the banks of the river, the flow starts to quicken, and this will be the time where these concerns will come to the fore. So, again, I've talked a lot, I always do, I'm sorry.
Point well taken, and I'll make it a point to reach out to and have another talk with you, as we have had in the past, and to the other five of you as well, one-on-one, just to see if there's any other constructive feedback that you have to offer, and I'm more than happy to try and incorporate that. Yeah. So, thank you again for the privilege of letting me sit here and helping you run the meetings.
Yeah, same here.
So, speaking of running the meetings, we haven't met in a month or so, and our next scheduled meeting isn't until December 6th, so we thought it would be a good idea, given that there's a lot of stuff going on, that we schedule another meeting for two weeks from today, on November 29th, that's a regular meeting, to take advantage of the fact that it's the same seven of us up here, and we can probably start to take action and have more shorter meetings rather than fewer longer meetings, and also not to have such a long time between meetings. So that's the spirit of the next item up here, to add that meeting in two weeks' time. So this will be the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
It's the 29th?
29th. So if there are no issues with that, Council Daniele, would you offer that motion?
Be it ordered that the town council's schedule be amended to add Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, at 6:00 PM as a town council meeting.
Second.
Heard Council Egan on that one. All right, any questions? Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Daniele?
Yes.
Council Bradley?
Yes.
Council Egan?
Yes.
Council Pillsbury?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, seven to zero, we pass this, and we have another meeting in two weeks' time. So that's the end of the printed agenda. I know there's a couple of other items that people wanted to chat about, so, and we do have one potential vote to take. Council Egan?
I just want to point out that typically, developing the agenda for a council meeting is done at the end of the week previous, and at the end of the week previous to the 29th, it's a two-day holiday. And I'm certainly not going to ask Chris Wolfe to do anything on Thursday or Friday of that week, after the Herculean task she and Carrie did last week. So there are a couple of things, but I'm wondering if we could have an email sharing at the end of this week to just flesh out what the agenda for the meeting on the 29th looks like, so we have some chance to contribute to that, and kick it around a little bit, and then it have, then get it set so we don't have to be thinking about trying to do something on the holiday week.
Good thought.
I would say if there's probably any items, have them, have the whole council email, Chris, or you and Dan, any suggestions to go on there? Because we'll probably be a day or two advanced for Thanksgiving week, so we'll be setting the final on like Tuesday?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, is that we get to it this week, so we can finalize it on Monday or Tuesday next week.
Sorry, maybe I heard that sideways then.
Could somebody just tell me how you get, how can you be sure to get something on the agenda? Do you do it in writing? Do you do it by talking to one of you two? What's the best way to get it on the agenda and make sure that it's there when you hoped it would be there?
Yeah, so I think, I'm sure there's a formal process. Informally, we sit down with Peter a week or so before the meeting and discuss all the kind of open items that we know about, and usually Chris and Peter draft an agenda based on the things that they know are open, and then we just give them feedback on that. I would think that emailing any of the four of us, John, me, Peter, or Chris, would probably get the item up on the list. I believe anyone can, any counselor can add an agenda by majority vote of the council, say, you know, I want this on the agenda, even though it wasn't on the.
Does that have to be done by the, in this case, this next Tuesday? It has to be done at the meeting. At the meeting itself, okay.
So the agenda.
Right now, if you wanted to.
Yeah, in fact, it's about to.
So one of the only, the glamorous roles of being council chair, you actually do have authority over the council agenda, but you have no authority over what actually gets discussed, because a majority vote of the council can overrule the council chair at any meeting. So Dan and John kind of informally control the narrative, but the real power rests with four out of seven counselors, if they don't like what's on there, if there's something that's, like, Ed's got an idea and it didn't get on the agenda, all he has to do is make a motion and get three other votes, and it's up for discussion. Like the next item we're going to talk about.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that was part of my comment, was to, we're having a special meeting, we have a number of things that are time-sensitive, that are pressing on us, so if there are some particular issues, let's get them up on the agenda, and we'll have a juicy meeting on the 29th.
Yep. Speaking of extraordinary items that are not on the printed agenda, can you give us an update on the bingo game situation, so we can decide if we want to add an agenda item to vote on that?
I can. The most burning issue in town right now is the fire company's annual turkey bingo. The fire company is a separate nonprofit composed mostly of retired firefighters, fire department employees, and others associated with the fire department, and active members as well. So it's a very closely associated nonprofit fire, sorry. Turkey Bingo is a very long-running annual tradition. I just heard some more facts about it before the meeting, and I know one of our members up here on the council can give us a lengthy history, I don't think we need it, but if we want it, Darrell, feel free. They were contacted by the state gaming commission, and the state is very concerned, obviously, about where turkeys are divided and how people gamble on them in the state of Maine. So the letter of authorization, all Bino games, this is technically a game of Bino under state law, all Bino games require the consent of the governing body of the town. And the consent for Turkey Bingo is over five years old, I was told, and it just got caught by the gaming commission, and they just told them today, we need a new letter from the town, and I said, well, if that had come tomorrow, you'd be out of luck, but we have a chance tonight that we can save Turkey Bingo for this year. So all, so what we need is a, what we need is a motion that the governing body of the town of Freeport consents to Turkey Bingo. I would even say, they told us it could last for five years, so consents to Turkey Bingo being held by the fire company at the Freeport Fire Station on the Monday before Thanksgiving each year. For however long the gaming commission will authorize the letter that I'm about to write. As long as you consent to it, we'll keep using that letter until they tell us they need a new one, but we'll try to get that like before, you know, a month in advance, so it's not last minute in the future.
Okay, so, so moved?
Perfect.
Thank you for keeping that brief.
And we've already spent about too much time on this, as it is, so.
How do the turkeys feel about this?
I decline to comment on that, Counselor.
They feel chilly.
We, this, this has been an issue in cash bingo games in other locations, so the South Freeport Church actually got pinched because they wanted to have a cash bingo game, and they couldn't get the timing right, because it would take basically two weeks to get it to the council, and the gaming commission said they couldn't do it. So we do want to make sure they get this, the gaming commission will shut them down, they have audited them.
We need a second.
I'll second. I have a question, Peter.
Yep.
Or Mr. Chair. My question is, this is one of those that dropped through the cracks, not because of us, but, you know, because of regulations that weren't familiar. Could the council authorize, Peter, maybe to get a letter that would allow this to carry on to the point we don't want it to carry on anymore? I'm looking at a different approach, so we don't have to get stuck with this in 10 years, if they would allow that.
Until, until otherwise rescinded by the town council?
Correct.
That would have to be an amendment right now, but it's a good one, so.
Would the motion that you make isn't?
You said until they decided it wasn't good.
Well, it was until the gaming commission says, but if, yeah, I mean, I'll write the indefinite, and you would have to just take another vote. I guess the counterpoint of that is the council would have to take another vote to rescind it. If that's the understanding of what you're voting on, I can write the letter like that. It's consent, it's not a formal motion, it's, I'm sure we'll be fine.
And I just think this would eliminate that problem maybe from happening down the road, that's all.
Maybe.
I don't think it changes anything.
Maybe, I don't, I don't know what they use, what crystal ball they use to determine how long a letter is stale, at what point the approval letter gets stale, they told them, oh, it's been over five years, you should get a new letter. I don't know, five is the cutoff? I'm hearing this third hand.
Did the other one have a limit on it? Did it say five years, or is it just?
No, they just thought that it was, as second hand, as it was reported to me from the volunteers who run the event, they were told the letter is essentially stale by the gaming commission. No, not a lot of detail there.
Write the same letter that you wrote last time.
A lot of government overreach to me.
So I guess the motion we've got now is, so the Monday before Thanksgiving, every year until the gaming commission deems it expired, so if anybody wants to amend that, I'm open to that.
I would like to amend that, that the, that the Turkey Bingo game will be held on the Monday before Thanksgiving until further notice.
Until further notice.
Second.
Okay. Vote the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment? Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Daniele?
Yes.
Council Bradley?
Yes.
Council Pillsbury?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so the motion has now been amended for it to be indefinite, and now we can vote on the motion itself. Council Fornier?
Yes.
Council Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Daniele?
Yes.
Council Bradley?
Yes.
Council Egan?
Yes.
Council Pillsbury?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have saved Turkey Bingo.
We did a thing.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I think that's our last vote.
I don't even know how it works, but I suppose.
I think that's the only formal vote.
The only formal vote, yeah. But we still have, I know we wanted to chat about housing, and we might also want to chat about anything else that any of you guys want to bring up. So, anybody want to bring anything up to chat about while we're here? Council Bradley?
I would just like to. Thanks. I would just like to bring the council up to know what the discussions have been around sewer, and it's not on the agenda because it wasn't timed to get it on the agenda, but there have been a series of sewer meetings, a small group, working group, not to decide anything, but just to develop options. Darrell and I have been talking, Brent, Brett Richardson, Rent Bridges from Woodard and Curran, Lee Eras, I hope I'm not leaving anybody out. And we went to the FEDC, talked to them about it, they passed a motion saying that they would like to see the council explore the sewer options with the sewer district, and to appoint a committee to do that. I will have a document on the agenda for next time, and it'll be, it'll lay out what the discussions have been and what the options have been identified to date, and what the proposed membership of the committee might be after talking to a number of people who seem to be interested in and informed. So that's, that's pretty much where it stands. I met last night with the sewer district at their public hearing on rate increases, and they're proposing a 13% rate increase to fund not only operations, but the new expenses due to amendments or modifications to the plant, and, you know, they voted for that, that increase, and then a five-year increase for every year for the next 10. So it's a lot of money that they're proposing to raise through connection fees, which is what got us started in the beginning because of its impact on the downtown, but which has now expanded into the, you know, sort of the more global issue of the town benefits derived from sewer, and whether there's either an opportunity obligation, or however you describe it, for the town to participate in the costs of the sewer district, and that's, those are the sort of the questions on the table. And then again, as I assure Dan and anybody else, nobody here is trying to decide these issues for anybody, but they are trying to bring them into focus so that there can be a discussion up here about what, what the town wants to do. That's my report.
So at the next meeting, you'll ask us to form a committee to?
Yeah, at the next meeting, I'm going to ask you to basically adopt the FEDC motion, which will be in your packet, and also to appoint the committee, with the understanding I just said, that it's advisory, nobody's, nobody's going to be deciding anything in that group, other than maybe, you know, they might leave some option off that they didn't think was reasonable, but that, that could obviously be brought on, back on by the council.
Council Fornier?
I brought up about committees earlier. Have we ever done like sunsetting that the state does on committees, where we say, we're appointing this committee for a two-year period with these specifics? Do we do that here?
We have, yeah, Jake, you were.
Yeah, Active Living was a prime example, it was like a six-year committee, and we let that one sunset, went away and got absorbed into Complete Streets. So there's precedent.
And I assume, Council Bradley, that that's what you would propose for this one, that it's a temporary ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I would think this committee could last six months and it would be fine. I mean, this isn't an ongoing sewer, well, whatever, to bring the issue forward to the councils, all this committee would do, that can be done in six months.
And then the council can decide whether it wants to have a sewer committee, depending on what it decides it does or doesn't want to do with the district. And I should.
You know, now that's enough.
Yeah, we can talk about it, yeah, yeah.
To be clear, though, those rate increases have already happened.
No.
No, they've just proposed it, I thought you said they voted on it.
They voted on it last night.
So it's, if they voted on it, like, they are going forward with it, so what, what will the committee work towards if it's reducing that, or is it other options?
Can we wait till we have?
Yes.
If we start talking this, then you'll get into that, and beyond that, then, we, she, it, that sort of stuff.
And to be clear, we don't get a say in the vote, the rate increases, right? That's the board decides, and they're done, yeah?
See, this is why I don't want to have, yes, we do, yes, we do get to say.
Maybe the way to look at it, and I hope I'm, if Lee Eras is watching, I hope I'm saying this right. Lee Eras doesn't know what we're going to do. He's got to get ready to pay for the sewer district, so he's putting in a rate increase at time, which he has to, and if we decide we're not going to do anything, that's all he's got. If we decide to do something, then he can change the rate increases. And, and so.
It may have an impact on the rate increase, yeah.
It may have an impact if we want it to, and they accept it.
Okay. It'll be a healthy meeting on the 29th. Anything else anybody wants to bring up before we get into housing? Yeah, unless there's anything else. Okay.
I actually do, unfortunately, have another thing.
Yeah.
So downtown revisioning, we were talking a little bit about transportation, the challenge was thrown back at you, who is interested in transportation? Is there a group like there is for everything else? There is now a group that's dealing with transportation on two different issues. One is along Main Street, and one is then out to the satellite assets, if you want to call them that, or features of the town, the farm, the desert in Maine, the harbor, the wolf's neck, and there is some action being developed on both. I can tell you, as of today, we have a cart, an extended golf cart, that we can have in a pop-up way. I have a commitment from the DMV from the state to license it for our streets, and a commitment from Maine Municipal to ensure it if we want to. And so at some point, and it doesn't have to be immediately, but once things calm down down a little bit, we'll have a discussion about how we, whether we want to do that, how we do it, what it might cost, and, and see if the council wants to go along with that. And, that's, I just wanted to bring, to say that that's happening. Oh, and that Lynda Bean, so that's along Main Street, you know, and the idea is, you know, disabled people, older people, people with packages, people going from the train station to their hotels, a whole lot of little transportation issues that are not major, but give the sense that we care about getting them. The issues of going out to the asset places is really something Lynda Bean's picked up on, and she's presented it, as I understand it, to the LL Bean Board, as, whether they want to do it, the way they do it in Acadia, um, which is to do transportation from one spot to another on a schedule using their equipment. And, I don't know that she's gotten any response to it, but Tony is, as usual, orchestrating the discussions.
One other thought, what about opening it to the townsfolk, too? Run around by golf cart. I mean, they do it in Daniel Island, South Carolina, it's pretty cool, they run it on the main roads, everyone's aware of it, and it's...
Yeah, you're going to find that in Maine, it's not quite that easy. There's things that are street legal, and there are things that aren't, and you've got to have insurance, and the only way this was going to happen, is going to happen, that I can figure out, after spending a month working on it, is if the town is interested in controlling the cart and paying for the insurance, and having the people who drive it be formal volunteers to the town. We'll have to decide that, to make this work.
Is there anything you need from the rest of us? Feedback, opinions?
I suppose if you thought I was nuts, you should tell me now, or listen later. Don't start.
About transportation?
Yeah, about transportation.
Sorry, I thought that was an open invitation.
Happy to put it on the agenda whenever you've got something that needs, needs a vote.
Whoa, no, not, like, the sewer on the next...
Sewer, yeah, 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 but transportation might be a little bit further.
That's a great idea.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Can you give us an update on the housing situation in town?
Yeah, and I'm going to defer John jumping if I say anything wrong. John was also on this call. John had the dubious, well, no, maybe not dubious, the honor of being on the land use commission that's been looking at, the legislative commission that's been looking at housing, so we looped him in, he's had some of these discussions. We had, I would say, kind of a few conversations, and recently a conference call with some decision-makers of the state, surrounding what is, what you're probably aware of, but what's been reported is the imminent kind of stop of the ERA, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program statewide, and you may ask why that is important to us, but there are approximately eighty families in Freeport, and by family, I mean anywhere from, you know, large family of several kids and parents to single people, so, so eighty family units from one to, you know, seven or eight, whatever size, or maybe bigger. So, there are eighty family units, varying, I guess, varying ways and different programs that they ended up using the ERA program. The ERA program has funded thirty families of new Mainers that are staying at a hotel, the Best Western in Freeport. It's funding approximately thirty families that are staying in apartments in Freeport that are, that are not the New Mainor category, and it's funding about twenty families staying in two other separate hotels that are not, also not the New Mainers category. So, fifty, so thirty refugee asylum seeker New Mainers, thirty families, fifty families that have been here, old Mainers, if you will, if we're using those terms, new and old, in all various living conditions, so paying for apartments, paying for hotels at varying rates based on agreements that have nothing to do with the town, that were negotiated between the agencies providing this money, and the different hotels or the different apartments. That program ran out of money, we knew it was kind of coming to an end at the end of this year, but the state announced, I think, as of November, or the end of this month, I don't know if there's thirty or thirty-one, but, uh, November, whatever, the end of the month, that program will be over. As a result, some of the people on the ERA program and some of the families have begun receiving eviction notices because they will no longer have source of funds to pay for their placement. So, um, like I said, a lot of different scenarios of people that are using this money, and a lot of different housing scenarios of where they are, and none of it having to do with us, being caused indirectly by us, but, here we are, and here are people in Freeport, some of which, not all, but some of those eighty will become homeless or are already qualified as homeless because they're living in hotels. It's a lot more complicated than that, there's a lot more things that go into that decision, but I mentioned, we had a recent conversation, um, we talked with some state officials, there are some things that are being explored to house some of those people and some of those families, but, nothing concrete at this point. I think there's some conversations that are going to be happening over the next couple weeks with our friends at FCS, who, uh, have been playing a huge role in this of trying to pick up the pieces and make connections, um, with volunteer money and things like that. And, our state legislator, Melanie Sacks, our rep, um, was involved with us, um, and really just trying to figure out what that means for all the different groups of people, it's an evolving situation, but it is something that I think some people will look at, the town is the one holding the bag. We've got people that will essentially be homeless, um, you know, on the streets, some of which may be in our community, or they may be, they may go other places. It's not new, it's a situation that we've kind of seen for three to four months coming, but it's not good. And there's, I would say there are some plans at the state level to address some of this, but there's not a comprehensive, John, jump in anytime you think I'm going off the rails here. I don't think there's a comprehensive strategy like, oh, there's eight thousand families in Maine on the ERA program, here's what we're going to do with the majority of them. It's kind of like bits and pieces of different nonprofits and private groups trying to step in to find solutions. I do think the question is going to come up at the legislature in the next session, which will start in the next month or so, but I don't have, I mean, we have no guarantee that the entire legislature is going to agree that, hey, this is the way that we should solve that problem. I think, in fact, there'll probably be twenty different opinions of how things should be done, and very difficult for them to get consensus. I think our rep is very up to speed on the situation, what it means here, and maybe some of the other communities around Portland that have been dealing with the shelter-by-hotel scenario for the past, um, you know, two years, um, but it's a very small group of maybe twenty municipalities in the state that see what's happening and what's coming, and we're one of them, I think. We don't have a huge number of people, like I said, there's eight, roughly eight thousand families statewide that are on the ERA program, we've got eighty, so call it one percent. It's a little bit, you know, it's, that's a little more per capita than our half-hour percent of the state population, so we're kind of doubly impacted, but there's, you have to keep in mind, there are a lot of towns that have no hotels. So, place, you know, like Durham or Powell, not to pick on our next-door neighbors, but they've got no, very few people on the ERA program because they don't have a lot of lodging that can be used, that the money can be spent at. So, unless they're at an apartment, one of the few apartments in town, they're not there, they're here. Um, so, we're disproportionately kind of exposed. Uh, there are a lot of places a lot worse than us, Portland, South Portland, Westbrook, I shouldn't say a lot worse, but in the same boat, you know, we're in the same boat as a lot of the greater Portland cities right now, um, here in Freeport, so...
The other acute thing is that after this rental assistance goes away, many, if not all, of the, particularly the people in the hotels who have no source of income, would turn to general assistance. And, there's a bunch of state regulations that go with administering general assistance, and there are limits for what you can pay for various activities, and at this point, um, the emergency general assistance for housing is way under what is going to be needed to support anybody in a hotel room or anybody in an apartment. And, a town can elect to raise the amount they might provide to a family, if, for instance, there was a source of funds for it. However, the town then gets penalized, uh, by the state for exceeding the per-night limits. So, uh, you know, we contract out GA to Freeport Community Services, and we're going to put them right between a piece of granite and a piece of granite, and they're going to have families right in front of them, and they're going to say, I don't know what the dollar amounts are, but they're going to say, we can offer you this much, and it's going to be twenty or thirty percent of what they actually need to stay for a month in a particular place. So, um, it's going to become acutely sharp in the next thirty days, um, about what, what to do, particularly with the New Mainor families who are prohibited from working because of crazy federal regulations about how long they have to be in the country and be processed by US immigration before they can get work, work permit status, and therefore, they can't get a job to help pay the rent. So, it's, uh, very acute.
So, this first came to my attention when Nate Goodman came in and told us of his problems with, uh, the personnel problems of, of sort of addressing all of the, the issues. He wasn't talking so much about New Mainers, as I understood it, but as the homeless population that is, it resonated at one or two of these properties. But, because of that, um, I reached out to Preblel Street, um, and said, look, uh, we, we've had a discussion here about whether we can address the loss of this income for rental assistance as a town, um, or whether we're going to try to meet that through some sort of prohibitive regulatory response that keeps these kinds of people from living in our town, so we don't have this problem. And, uh, so, I asked Preblel Street if they would come up here and sort of sit down with FCS and with Nate, and there's a meeting tomorrow, John is going to be at it, and, uh, Peter, and talk about, you know, if rental assistance is one piece of it, what are the other pieces that the town might have to look at in order to support this community of eighty families that are at risk in our, and they're not only risk in terms of rental, they're risk in terms of schools, and clothing, and a whole bunch of other things that we haven't even, well, I shouldn't say we haven't even, I'm sure others have talked about it, I haven't talked about. But, to me, um, and I don't know whether I'm being, I have no, I have no facts at this point, so that's, that's the, I, I see a lack of leadership, is what I see. I think if we could say, we're, we want to do something and will do something to support the family if we want to, if the family's in our town, we could find a way to do, to get through, um, this winter. Then the solutions are, are sort of global. I mean, we can't support immigrant families unlimited any more than Portland or South Portland can, but we could start putting pressure on a global solution, and we could bring the communities who don't have housing to the table, including our good neighbors that we've just discussed, and others that we haven't that don't have housing, including Yarmouth and Falmouth, who have a lot of money but no housing. That doesn't give them no responsibility, in my view. They should be at a table talking about a global solution. Now, that's just my point of view, maybe there are reasons that's silly or naive, um, but I think we ought to go down a road where we, we explore these options, starting with what could we really do? And to that point, I'll go back to the ARPA money, you know, I was talking to Sarah, she has a certain amount of money to address the loss of economic rent. I don't know whether, how much of what she has is there, but we put some, some aside that's sort of discretionary, all she's really got to do is tell us she needs it, and this would sound to me to be the kind of thing we were talking about her, her having to identify. And beyond that, there's other ARPA money, you know, that we haven't figured out a, a dynamic need for. Well, here, here is one. So, I'm, what I'm really hoping is that, that this town will, will take a leadership role in meeting the needs of its residents as this money goes away, and we don't wait for some global solution with somebody said, you know, involves communities way down, down the state that have no interest in this, don't have, it's not a problem for them. And if we can find a solution in the short term, that'll put us at the table for pressuring for a long-term solution, which is where I think we could do well. Again, John, you, you've probably heard me say what I just said before, I don't know whether that sounds naive to you or not, you know a lot more about the details, but, what I'd like to see us do is have the numbers. You know, I'd like to know what it, how many families really are there? What does it really cost to, to, to take up the slack, so that we're not talking about emotions or principles, we're talking about, you know, dollars and cents, because that's what it's going to boil down to, and, and, you know, that will affect how we, what we decide. Shut up again. Yeah?
What troubles me on the issue is, uh, they were provided for, for a number of years from the state, and I, I, I think we have to make a strong stance, and I agree with you, of a leadership role on probably a couple of different areas, and probably the first area is through our elected officials, not only our representative, but a senator, because, we saw this coming, Portland's been dealing with this for many, many years. It's, it's coming, it's expanding across the state, and it's not going to be solved in, we would like to hope it will be solved in the future, but I don't think it's going to be. So, I think we, we really have got to be vocal, and we've got to use our resources, maybe through MMA, maybe through the LPC, or whatever, but, um, we can't stand down. I think we have to be heard, and we want to be part of solutions, and, and we need a stopgap measure to help our short-term needs, but we need a long-term fix. And, I, I hope we, as a council, will, will take that role to put the responsibility back at the state level where they have been supporting us, to try to come up with that. We, we have heard, uh, the state's in good shape, and they have fund balances or whatever, this is a true emergency, which, uh, they have funds for true emergencies, and, and, you know, not just Freeport, all of the communities needs assistance. So, I, I, I think we've got to be part of the squeaky wheel, uh, because if we're not, we're not going to, you know, they're, they're not going to address it. So, I hope we do take a strong leadership role on multiple areas, because if we don't, uh, we know that nothing will be done.
The only thing I would add, we talked about the dollar issue, that's an open debate for, up here, for sure, if, what, if any amount of local funding is appropriate for us to bring to the table. There is a bigger picture, which is a lot of the hotels, um, the primary indication, hotels have been the, you know, shelter-by-hotel have been the backstop to fill kind of the shelter need that's been unmet. So, a lot of, I should say, there are probably twenty placements that aren't related to anyone's particular immigration status, that are people that aren't in apartments, that would be homeless otherwise, that are in hotels paid for by the ERA program. There are other people that aren't on the ERA program that are in hotels, according to general assistance and according to voucher payments by outside agencies, either through the city of Portland, Opportunity Alliance, Catholic Charities, several of the other placement agencies. The hotels, their preliminary kind of lean at this point in time, what we've been told, is they will not work with us on general assistance placements because of their experience that they've had. So, they're not differentiating between, um, you know, whether someone's on ERA or not, they are saying, they're telling Mike and Sarah at FCS, we will not work with Freeport as an option, we, you could give us two hundred dollars a night, we're not going to take somebody because we've had these bad experiences for the past year. So, we don't just have, we do have a dollar problem, and that's state and local and private, and it's everyone in the entire state, we all need to look at it. We have an actual housing stock problem because there aren't apartments to put people in, and there aren't hotels that will take people now, and there aren't shelters, so, I've been very negative on this, I know that Sarah at FCS has been very, very, feeling very, very negative on, what are we going to do? And, it's not going to be something that we're going to be able to solve because we don't have those resources, so, to get to the point of there needing to be state involvement, I mean, it could become a homeless emergen, homelessness emergency where there is not adequate shelter this year, as we have seen for many of the years, so...
So, let me just take what you, dissect what you just said. You just, really just said, there's an emergency. You just said it again.
Yes.
And you said, you know, we can't solve the whole thing, and we've said that.
Yes.
The question I think we need to come to grips with as a council is whether, we have eighty families roughly in this town that are in this situation, and will have an immediate impact on them for the loss of revenue for rental assistance. Do we know the numbers of, that they each pay to whom, and what you would have to come up with in order to maintain the, the basic number, the cost of rental assistance that's currently in place that we're losing?
Some of them, yes, and we can probably assume the others.
Could you get that together for us? Because that's the sort of thing that I think a, a, a council's going to have to know in order to make some decision about what's realistic.
Yep.
Okay? And, so, we, we can, if we can sort of quantify this thing and focus it down as opposed to the principles of, of it, and, you know, which are, I think you've stated well.
So, so, apart, one that we're not going to have access to are the thirty or so families that are in apartments, um, on ERA, because those are private contracts. We may be able to get some of that information from the cap agencies that are handling...
Why don't you just go ahead and go do it, and see what you got and what you don't have, and come back and tell us? I, I don't know what we're going to have, but I, I know I don't know, and...
The hotel ones, we could easily, Mike and Sarah have access to that.
But, the other thing you said was that the hotels aren't going to work with us.
We don't know that. I mean, it seems to me, well, he said a lot of things, but he hasn't done anything yet, and I don't mean that as a criticism, this town hasn't taken a position yet. These, these are businesses in our town, they look to us for a lot of things, including policemen, apparently, you know? So, if you don't, if you want a policeman to come to your place when you have a problem, you might want to talk to us about what you're charging someone who's there. I don't know how it plays out.
Some of them will definitely talk with us, have indicated that they'll have a conversation, but there are others that are off the table, and they won't, they won't take GA, just...
Love to hear about them. Love to hear about them. It's, but, until you know all these things, and they're, it's sort of quantified, we're all just talking our opinions about stuff, which is fine, we all have them, and, but you want to get them informed and owned down, at least I do, before I go spouting off, oh, I want to solve this problem, even for eighty families, if that's three million dollars a month, that's, that ain't going to happen, you know?
That is very true.
And, that I shouldn't have said a number, but I would like to know what the numbers are before we start saying what we think?
Yeah.
You know, because that, and that's got to come from you, because I don't have...
It's not, it's not three million, but it's a substantial...
Whatever it is, you'll bring it to the table the next time we talk, and if you could have it for tomorrow, that would be great.
Sarah and Mike will bring it to the table, so, they'll have it to you tomorrow, and Sarah's on, Sarah's here, so she hears us talking right now, she's probably already cranking this.
No, but, I mean, I think we are expecting that information to be available on this, if this is the item that we're going to, the big item that we're going to talk about at the end of the special meeting we just said.
This next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we're expecting, we probably won't have all of the facts, but we can probably get the bulk.
Council Danielle?
But, people are being evicted like two days after our meeting? Is that a real concern?
Some of those, some of those eighty have been given thirty-day notices to quit and eviction process... processes will start if they don't leave by the end of that, which could take one week, it could take four weeks.
We do have a couple of weeks after this meeting, potentially.
Yeah, but there's not, but those go quickly, that could be a month, you know, you could have a month between.
But it could be a couple of, we're not, I was thinking we were literally working with two days.
Can we, do we? If somebody chooses to leave based on the order that they've been given to leave, then we are dealing with it on two days later, but that's going to be few, I think, I would hope.
Do we, as a council, want to make an op-ed, pen something, put it in the paper, and like, I mean, we can use our platform to yell.
Yep.
Right, like, what are, what can we do that's, that's easy? And I don't know if it's, you know, like, Peter, you, you coining an op-ed, like, as like a town manager's perspective, us doing one as well, like, as counselors or as a council as a group? But it seems like that's how you put pressure on, on the state, is saying, hey, this is the problem, and we're telling you it's coming right now.
And we have had some preliminary conversations with colleagues, there's, like I said, there's probably eight that are really in it in Cumberland County and York County that are hotel-heavy communities, and we're all willing to play together, so.
My next question, now that I'm rolling. GP Cog or Cumberland County, are they going to play a role in this? Because that seems like if it needs to be a statewide issue, well, the next best thing would be a county issue.
Cog has played a role in trying to make several proposals for solutions, none of which have gotten traction. They've been trying to come up with facilities, with models, so they, they are working on it, how they can really do it, you know. I don't think the county has bid on it yet, is a crucial issue. I, I think they very well know the scope of it, but they have some of their own operational issues that are.
But how do we yell to them? Right? But I mean, like, I just feel like we're talking about being a squeaky wheel, so who are we yelling at?
I can give you our commissioner, so whoever wants to talk with Steve Gordon, who's our local District Five Commissioner for Cumberland County, let's get on the phone with them, you know? We have, so there are five county commissioners, we have one here, Harpswell, Brunswick, Freeport, over to the west of here, so.
Or, I mean, do they have, like, public comment period like we do, and show up with 30 people all yelling? I mean, I'm, I'm really asking for, like, options, because it seems like we're, we're stuck.
I think legis, I think right now, the legislature has the most tools to deal with it, but is the most divided. They're the ones that can solve the problem, I.
But they're not in session.
No, but they, but they will be before this becomes an emergency.
They don't care about our 80 families in particular. They have a general, global problem that they, it's going to take them months to work through. What we have is 80 families that could be on the street in a month.
Correct.
Right? And it's, that's the problem we ought to be focused on, it seems to me, not, not use that and your, what you come up with and that, and the knowledge you gain and the tactics you take to put pressure on the, the larger solution that's longer term. But when, when these people get on the street, and their kids are in the schools or aren't in the schools, and they're all hanging around, and we're going to be talking about, why can't they work, and where do they get the money and all, they'll be way too late. We got to know that stuff now, and I'm looking to you, Peter, because, you know, there's nobody up here who can get into that. I mean, maybe John can.
We've got a lot of it, we'll have it, we'll have the bulk of it for next Tuesday.
When Jake says, what do we do, then we, first of all, what are we going to say? Once you know what you're going to say, you know who to talk to. Right now, I mean, you could talk to everybody, but I would just be saying, we think this is a shitty, terrible situation, you want to be doing something about it. I'm thinking, it's a terrible situation, we ought to be doing something about it. When we find out what we can't do, then we know who to go to for the other things. I'm not saying, I'm oversimplifying it because, but I, I think the idea of just squeakiness is, is not a principle, it will get us, it will get us, it won't even get us any attention, but it will get us, you know, at the beginning. At the end, we know what we want, let's be as squeaky as we can.
I don't. I want to back up to your, your point, Peter, of the groups that, that aren't going to assist us, and, and you mentioned Catholic Charities and a couple other groups there. So, and I probably, we can't get into this tonight, we'll wait for the next meeting, but they have been assisting up to this point, and because of the state funding has run out, now they don't want to go in because of, you know, what, what we said that the state will penalize us.
Federal funding that's running.
On the federal funding, so it's kind of a federal issue.
Yeah, those, and those, those aren't local nonprofits, a lot of the, I think there are, John, are there two caps that administer in our area? Caps are community action programs, they're quasi-governmental aid groups that distribute federal and state aid, you know, like services essentially, they distribute aid. So it's basically a big pot of money federally and statewide. It was, it was approved by the state, federal money approved by the state, that was made available to the various caps and community aid groups around the state. Those are the people that, I think what you just said is accurate, it's not that they don't want to help, but their money that they have available for this rental assistance problem or homelessness problem is gone. It will be gone by December, end of December at the latest.
How do we not know that? How do we not know that a year ago?
We did know that. We did know that. We've been saying that to everyone who would listen for a year, and there's no motion at the, there's no motion at the state level to.
What he's really asking is, why hasn't this been an issue for us?
Yeah.
Why, why are we just getting, getting a focus on it?
Because it's an emergency.
I mean, we've, we've, I remember talking about it in March, April, and when we had Sarah and Mike here with us at the most recent meeting, I mean, we, this is coming. We knew that this is coming.
Most recent meeting is why we're all upset.
Yeah, but it wasn't, I don't know that there was a date set, I didn't, I didn't hear it's December, or it's, anyway.
So, so to, so the answer to that, two weeks ago, the state announced the end of that program.
Okay, so the state decided it's ending?
Yes, yes.
Because the federal money ran out.
Well. That's a good summary for public discussion, yes. Yeah.
We were sort of prepped for it, it wasn't.
So. The, the date when it was going to happen could have been three months from now, it could have been six months from now, it could have been next week. We didn't know until maybe three weeks ago, when there was an actual cutoff date. I could be a little bit wrong on, but I mean, it was within the past couple of weeks, we got the.
Yeah, the state, okay.
I, I'm hoping we give directives to, to Peter to go out, number one, we need to put this in the papers and, and, and do a release, and we need to do it weekly, you know, and, and to bring these concerns up. We don't have the solutions, but at least if we bring the matter out so we can get some public awareness and, and more attitude, maybe that will help to bring some of the solutions. But the, the trouble that I have here is, is the state has thrown us back in our laps. Let's call, call the issue as it is, and, and we have got to go back through our representatives, and maybe through your point, Jake, of, of get a group together to go to Augusta and say, hey, you know, this, this has come back to try to find some, some solutions of funding to get, to get over the top. And, and, but we've, yeah, the, the forum here is a good start, but we really have got to be loud and boisterous to try to move it forward. And I, I would like to see us give permission, permission to Peter to start that, Sarah, and, you know, the election's over with, now we can come up and say, these are true needs to, you know, we need some help.
And I think being squeaky's good, but we also need to work on the solution at the same time. We need to say, hey, because the state brought it to us, and now they're saying, hey, here you go.
Yeah, I guess just, I, I think we want to not necessarily come out with the blowtorch on the state, because the state has been a pass-through. This is a, this is federal funding that has made these opportunities possible as some kind of a relief largely from COVID funding, and backing up before folks are, are being, quote, sheltered in hotels, they had no shelter at all, and that is a result of, we don't have enough housing stock in our state. So there's a complex web of causes that are promoting this crisis right now, and it's going to require a complex web of solutions as well, because not everybody in those emergency situations is, is in the exact same position where they just need the fix. The fix is going to have to be, you know, 25 different things, because it's going to be services, it's going to be childcare, it's going to be job training, it's going to be employment work, it's, you know, for the asylum seeker families who do not yet have the ability to work, it's going to be 100% rental assistance until they can get that permit, and they want to work.
How much longer is that?
It can be 18 to 24 months for a family.
Yeah, and it depends on where they are and whether or not they.
How do we expedite that? That, that's something, we should be looking to expedite that and getting penalties.
There are a lot of people focused on it, but it's, it's still a federal, a federal.
So, I mean, that, that may be a third of the problem, in my opinion, could go away tomorrow if the federal government stopped the policy. Now, there's a reason, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but the reason that that work prohibition existed is because people at some point in time, several years ago, were exploiting that, the asylum and refugee programs instead of getting appropriate work visas. And it was noted federally that, hey, people are coming over claiming asylum status, refugee status, working for six months, going back home before they even get their case in front of a judge. So the, the federal government many years ago put in, if you're, if you're adhering to one of those programs which have legitimate purposes, you're not allowed to work to prevent bleed over from legitimate visa programs and people taking shortcuts. That now, that is now the problem, that protection to stop abuse of those visa, those worker visa programs now prohibits people from coming in and working, when we've got 30%, maybe 20% of the people on the ERA program, or the home, you know, the homeless population that are being sheltered here in Maine, want to be working and are being told by the federal government, you cannot work, which is the complete backwards message, which makes no sense to me. But there's, this is, I mean, this is a California, Texas, Florida issue, not a Maine issue. This is, there's a lot of people federally on all sides of the aisle who would rather sit there and point at it and laugh and say, see, it's the, it's a problem, ha, 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 you know, and use it to score points rather than fix the problem. That is a major problem here.
They could probably put a date on it, say, if you're here now, it's work, and if you get here after that, too bad, so sad.
It could be solved tomorrow in Congress, if there was willingness from people in other areas beside New England to work on it, because it really, it's a, you know, it's a political issue in California and Texas, it's much bigger than what we're seeing here, because they have actual immigration debates there, right? Debates about how to handle it, and they have supercharged on either side of what you're going to do, so.
Let the states figure it out, right?
Okay. So it'll be a fun meeting, I think, on 29th. Hopefully we'll have more information, there's.
We will have as much information as available, the council will have access to it, we will make sure of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah's here, she's listening, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be talking with her and Mike.
I encourage you to talk to Peter, talk to Sarah between now and then, get as much information as you can as you want to, because there's probably daily changes between now and then, yeah. Daryl.
I would like to have maybe a draft letter for our next meeting that's going to be sent to the state, that we could endorse as a council, so we have one voice coming out. So, you know, I think that would be a powerful tool to at least start, you know, I think we have to have, we got to be an octopus here and go in like, you know, multiple directions to try to.
We'll get something for you to look at, for sure.
Thank you.
Without trying to make it too blowtorchy, as John said, but identify the problem. There has been a lack of plan to address this at this point in time.
And, and just.
So what I would want to say, and, and John and I don't agree on everything, would probably be very different, would probably be along those lines, but I think, well, you guys can all debate on what the.
MMA is going to be supportive of this, because the, the last couple of weeks that I was on this commission up in Augusta, one of the members of that commission was a representative from MMA, and she was the one that brought the issue forward to make it the top priority of the commission, to recommend to the legislature, restore the ERA, because it's going to crush the municipality. So we will have a friend at MMA to raise this issue up, and I think we should exploit that.
I think that there is pretty broad consensus among municipalities that this is an issue that needs to be dealt with.
Was that, you guys looked into it as a commission for a while, and was that where you landed? Was restore ERA was the most immediate thing we could do?
Well, and, and you can say that, and then the thing comes back across the table, okay, where are we going to come up with the, you know, the dollar amount, which is somewhere between, you know, $300,000 and $500,000 a day to house people that are being housed right now, and, you know, the federal resource is the only one that can handle that kind of budget. So that's why it's complex, because it's not just, you know, pull this lever and make the solution happen, it's, it's very involved. But that was, yeah, that was, there was a discussion to make restoration of the ERA